It's six o'clock. It's Wednesday, March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. And this is the Newbury Planning Board meeting. We have three members, so we have a quorum. Um, I wasn't here last meeting. I did listen, I watched the entire tape of last week's la- last meeting.
You did a good job.
No comments.
You did a good job. You sure you don't want to keep up? Okay.
So elections coming up.
Um, that's true. So we're all eligible to vote. And item number three is minutes of the prior meeting. Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes of the prior meeting that was on March first of two thousand twenty-three as written.
I will second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the meeting minutes of the meeting of March first. All those in favor?
Well, before we do that, is there any discussion? Did they need time to read them?
I read them. I did read them. I read them the other day, but.
There is no discussion.
There is no discussion. All those in favor? One, two, three, and we've done that. Okay, let's see. First, on old, on business, is Chase Hill subdivision amendment. Bill Fisher applicant. And our five lot fifteen findings of facts and signatures. And findings of facts should be right here.
So I have two copies. So one to review them. If you approve of them, I'll leave two copies signed.
Lot, gentlemen? I saw no errors.
It's good for me.
Congrats. So I would like to make a motion that we accept the findings of facts and conclusions of law for application number twenty-three dash two seven four.
I'll second that. It has been moved and seconded that we approve the findings of facts for application twenty-three dash two seven four. All those in favor?
One, two, three, and it's carried.
Let me sign these things.
Sign, please witness, and sign the.
Oh, let's see. There's fifteen.
Witness that for you?
You get two lines. You want to do this from test?
Don't.
Oh, it's gonna be yes. Okay, you're right. But thanks for the body.
Holy cow. That's like illegible. But you are right-handed.
I am right-handed.
We'll forgive you.
It barely worked, but. Okay, we've got that done. Next. D, it's, it's gonna strike through it. What's that?
Part of it. Part of it's not gonna apply.
Okay, let's see, um.
You got there Peter Schwag?
I'm not sure how to read my books. Let's see. Peter, applicants will present missing a butter letter only. Planning Board will present oral Palmer engineers as expert reviewers. An abbreviated version of the DEP application. Topographical documents of butter letters will be entered into the record.
How you doing? Um, well, we'll start off with the butter letters since that's the first thing we made. Uh, there was a comment made at the last meeting that we missed an order, so I got copies of the letter that was mailed and then an updated list of orders.
Thank you. Not to be a stickler, but do you have the green little copy of the notice, USPS?
I don't have it, no.
Okay. Does somebody at your office?
I can try to find it, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
While we're speaking of abutters, uh, I don't know, sure when we were going to be introducing correspondence.
Um, anytime.
There is correspondence that the board has received inquiring as to the determination of the list of abutters. So perhaps you might want to hand out the list if you.
You mean the three letters?
Uh, no, the, there was a letter from, there was, wasn't there a specific correspondence requesting the additional abutters or, or?
That was an investigation I did on my own. That wasn't from an abutter.
Oh, I thought there was a correspondent. I thought you said there was a, that you received a question.
It was a conversation in person with someone.
Oh, okay.
And then I did investigation on top of that.
Let me back up. Would you, would you enlighten the board in that?
Yes, I will. Um, I had a conversation, uh, within a butter about how the board determined at our last meeting who was abutters and who was not. The ski lift trail being part of the project, this person felt that they really should have been more people notified because the project includes that new ski trail that runs parallel to Monkey Brook, not just the new lift for Merrill.
To include the trails themselves in the abutters?
To the trails.
Right, so the thousand-foot measurement would become more broad.
Yeah.
So that's, uh, reading the ordinance and, and Peter and I have talked about this because I called Peter and said, Peter, I think we need to look at how we did this. So officially, and I told him I had to bring this up in front of the board, public meeting and all, so he knows all this. Yeah. What do you think?
If there are lots that you'd like in a butter notice to send to, then let me know.
Okay. I, I can, I can do this. Oops, sorry. I can do the map and send that over to you, screenshot it and do the thousand-foot grid.
Yep, just give me a list of the abutters.
I'll do that. Okay.
So it's not just a thousand feet of that.
Well, this is actually Barker, so don't look at this, but I'm using the GIS maps as an example. Yes, I can measure a thousand feet from the actual project, um, tax map that is going to be on lot, that is going to be on, and do that thousand-foot measurement.
So, so.
From the project.
Joel, can you bring up the, the GIS for?
For Merrill?
For Merrill, please?
Sure.
And zoom in on, on Monkey Brook Road between, um, and Ridley and the golf course? Or whatever that road's called.
Trillium.
No, not Trillium. The one above, well, above, above the golf course.
Above the golf.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so right there, that's good. That's right. Uh, now go, go in and, and choose a pencil.
Yep.
And draw from the, a series of lines starting at the top of Merrill Hill.
Lot three?
Uh, yeah, right up there, top lot, lot three, go, go in the westerly direction along that ridge.
Oh, you want me to draw where the lift is going?
Yeah, well, not where the lift is going, but where that, that, that outward, that westernmost trail.
Oh, okay.
Which basically you can see, Peter, edit, well, zoom in a little bit more so we can see the lots in there. If you look at Monkey Brook Road and assume that, that your proposed trail is, I don't know what, fifty feet, a hundred feet from there, the road, road's edge?
Yeah, probably a hundred and fifty feet or so.
Okay, so if you were to, if you were to go a thousand.
Nicely done.
Thanks. Almost like I do this for a living.
Yeah, now you can almost go straight to the, uh, a little bit, yeah, you almost can go straight to the, to the top of Merrill Hill from there.
Well, I can't. Sorry to worry.
Okay, well, that's okay. Just leave that there.
Okay.
If you were to draw a thousand-foot line, if that is the approximate, very crudely, uh, approximate position of your proposed trail, and you, and you go out a thousand feet from there in a northwest direction, you can see that you're gonna capture a lot of Mahousick Glen property.
Yeah, like I said, if you guys, uh, have a list of other lots that you want me to do, then feel free to send it to me and all the send notes.
Well, if you will, it's a joint effort, I think.
There we go.
Well, I've presented the joint effort twice, and so you guys have projected it twice, so that's kind of like you.
The, the, Joel will, will, will come up with a.
Official list?
With, with a list of, of additional abutters that need to get in there, but it looks like you have several more people in, in Mahousick Glen that need to be. And just for the, for the record, in the previous meeting, we were just talking about a thousand feet either side of the proposed lift line as opposed from the, the trail.
Okay.
It was brought up by a citizen that, that was probably not all inclusive.
So my only request is that when I get the list from Joel, please make sure that it's complete this time.
Okay.
Thank you.
And so, so we're looking at, so, so we're on Monkey Brook, we're looking at the lift line going up, so we're looking to the.
West.
West, and there, there is nothing to the east of that trail?
The, we already got that. That was, uh, C and T.
Okay, alright.
Which is the big, that big square rectangle.
Okay, alright, alright, alright.
And none of the, and just again to re, to, to re, uh, refresh, none of Merrill Hill lots are in there because they all have covenants that allow the applicant to put in ski trails.
Yeah, I'll look for the official list from Joel and.
I'll get that.
Send out whatever is left over.
Okay, thank you.
Next thought, Jay?
Uh, well, what's next?
Right on your agenda. Um, topographic documents, Peter, do you have those?
Topographic documents in what form?
Um.
Well, if you have some bars there, where?
Mm-hmm.
Well, the next one is, is the oral Palmer engineers.
Which may or may not, so we've just, we've come up with, um, we, the board, several meetings ago asked, we need to get a list of engineers for third-party review.
I agree with that.
Yeah, so through that search and because of conflict of interest between Boeing and different projects they have going on in the state, we've come up with one.
I have a suggestion if I could throw it out there.
Sure.
Um, DEP is understaffed and they had the Oxford County Soil and Water Conservation District to review this project on behalf of DEP. Um, they have an engineer named Ross Cutlets. I don't know if his, um, if he would be considered a conflict of interest, but we've gone through a lot of revisions and we're in the middle of another revision with Ross. And so, um, if the, if there doesn't exist a conflict of interest and if the board is receptive to it, in my mind, it makes a lot of sense to have Ross do a third-party review on behalf of the board because he could do it very quickly. Um, just present you with a, basically a paper trail of all, of all of the, um, revisions that him and I have gone through. Um, and then basically we don't end up with two different permits stating two different trajectories with two different reviewers. And that way the state and the town approved documents match each other because they were reviewed by the same third-party reviewer. It's a suggestion, I'd like to throw it out to the board. Um, Ross is an extreme detail stickler, so I don't think you guys should be disappointed with his work. But I wanted to throw it out there.
So he's working for the state, not for Sunday River?
He works for the Oxford County Soil and Water Conservation District. We pay him, he does the review for the state.
So Sunday River is paying?
Yeah, we pay him through the Soil and Water Conservation District, um, but he does not act as our representative, he acts as the state's representative. But rather than us pay the state and the state pay him, just the way that the.
Oh, geez, get the Bureau of General Services involved? I don't have any say. I'm looking at you three.
Well, I, gee, he's got a good, probably got a good point, rather than having two people reviewing it, one person would review it. I'm just wondering if, if Mr. Cutlets would be a conflict of interest, but I don't know.
Um, I would, I see this as a, um, not only for this application, but forthcoming applications. So I would like to, whoever we choose, to get somebody who we develop a rapport with in the long term and will be, we know will be free of any conflict of interest. I'm a little bit concerned when I hear that, you know, Sunday River is paying for the engineer's time, but the engineer represents a different party, in this case, the state. You know, that's, I, you know, that's similar to dual agency in real estate where supposedly the agent represents the, the buyer's interest, but is being paid by the seller.
Yeah, yeah. I, I.
I mean, to me, it just, it seems like there's some, that's the word I'm looking for.
Oh, the other thing, so two more things. One is, in my mind, the application needs to be deemed complete before we determine what the third-party reviewer is going to review.
Alright.
And piggybacking on that, um, if the third-party reviewer is reviewing the same stuff that the engineer at the Soil and Water Conservation District is reviewing on the behalf of the state, a lot of this stuff is to a certain extent subject to professional judgment. And so it's very possible they've ended up with two different sets of permit documents that may or may not match depending on the judgment of whoever is reviewing them. Um, and so you're just gonna need to figure out a way to overcome that obstacle if that were to be the case.
Um, we're talking apples and oranges. We're talking a reviewer. We are talking a consultant who is going to review the application and the paperwork that's been submitted, the plans, not necessar- and associated, associated material. To me, that's a different. So, uh, this is a consultant that steps in and fills a void that we have here in the board with very, having very technical knowledge. And can sit there and say, yes, this is, this, you know, we're following what we're supposed to be following as opposed to going through and doing a permit application type of thing. Later on, there may be provisions where the board might want to use a third-party inspector which would be closer to what you're talking about, but still would not be reviewing a permit application to the NID treaty. So, uh, what we're looking for is a consultant to the board to help us digest, make sure that the application's complete, that the information that you provided is complete, not necessarily be, uh, going through eight hundred plus pages of HydroCAD in minutia detail to figure out if it's all correctional.
So I guess, I guess that's part of my confusion is the application is not only being complete. Do you feel that you need a third-party reviewer to help you determine whether or not the application is complete? Is that what I'm hearing?
No.
Okay.
We can figure out if it's complete, but we.
So my follow-up question being, can we focus on determining whether or not the application is complete first? Once the application is deemed complete, then we go on to which elements of the application need to be reviewed by third-party, um, consultant?
Okay, but at this point, we're trying to figure out who's gonna do that.
Yeah, but do we, do we need to figure that out tonight? I'm just.
Uh, uh, who the board selects for a consultant is business of the board, not necessarily subject to the applicant's input.
So why was it put on this?
Probably my error.
Okay.
If I had to, yes.
Okay.
That's fair.
Um, so where does that leave us?
Looking at the application, whether it's complete or not.
Okay, let's do that.
Um, do we have anything else in that, uh? Oh, Dave. Joel, the abutter letter, okay, so do we have anything else that needs to be?
I have three abutters letters, um, one handwritten, uh, one mailed USPS, and one by email that I need.
Well, they're not necessarily abutters.
I'm sorry, no, no, no.
Three pieces of correspondence that deal with this application.
Yes. You guys ready for that? Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Yeah, these are all three. Peter?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, could you read this under the record?
Okay.
Please.
The first, um, document I have here is dated, um, two twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three. It says, Mr. John Goch, the chairperson of Newbury Planning Board, Mr. Ochi, I would like to request a public meeting regarding the application for the new lift at Merrill Hill. Thank you, Bambi Baker. Christine Castillo.
Castillo.
Castillo Lane, you remain. Um, the second document is actually a copy of a, an email. And, uh, starts out, before you review to the meet, to the meeting next week, I will have printed copies for the group and permanent record, no comments, please. And it goes down to Chairman.
That's from me, by the way. I made those comments.
Yes. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
But you're right. It's the way to do it. Um, so this document is dated Saturday, March eleventh, twenty twenty-three. And, uh, it's to me and it's subject Merrill Hill. Chairman, Newbury Planning Board, Newbury Maine. Dear Board members, I live at ten thirty, Sunday River Road and have been a Newbury resident for twenty-five plus years. I'm writing with some concerns and questions regarding Sunday River's Merrill Hill project. They can be summed up simply, traffic, traffic, traffic. We endured the continual dump truck traffic over seven months of twenty twenty-one. Steady trucking from five AM through seven PM daily, resulting in the loss of any outdoor activities during that time. This is a very popular area for biking, running, dog walking. Some of these activities become dangerous for locals and guests during that time. I asked Newry's town administration, some sort of temporary signage advising people, especially unaware visitors, of the heavy trucking activity. Warning signs were posted after five months and after two trucks were off the road and resulting power outages. My request for the current project is the same as I understand trucking will begin using the same pit and the same route. Limited hours would be welcome. Will there be a bond posted for damages to the road? To those who say that there will be no increased traffic through this project and continued development, I would argue, yes, there is. Currently, the traffic at the Sunday River Skiway slash Skiway Road intersection is a problem for any residents who are inclined to travel between the hours of seven AM to eleven AM and three PM to five PM on weekend days and holiday weeks. For example, with just five vehicles backed up at the intersection, each requires a minimum of five minutes to be allowed, if we are lucky, into the traffic flow. Is there any thought being given by Sunday River or Newry to solutions? A traffic control person, Sunday River Public Safety, question mark, question mark, between the hours is needed. As we know, there is only one way in and out. My understanding is that there will be no parking or parking lots at or near the proposed lift drive. Will a road be monitored by Sunday River Public Safety to address that? We know skiers and riders will attempt to park around the lift base and around the Mahousick Glen subdivision and on the Monkey Brook Road. There will be pedestrian foot traffic. The situation in Sunday River's current parking lots demonstrates the answer is no. And there appears to be a, there appears to be no lot monitoring at all. Cars are parked outside of the stanchions into traffic lanes, along traffic lanes, and in front of no parking signs. If there was ever a car fire or a medical event in a lot, it could result in a catastrophe. Lifeflight helicopter landing is sacrificed to parking on days where the golf course parking is full. Lifeflights are directed to Beaufort Airport. I am not opposed to Sunday River. I'm not opposed to development. I'm a lifelong skier who is fortunate to live in a beautiful area. Please consider community's safety and our neighborhood in your deliberations. Sincerely, Jill Kenny, ten thirty, Sunday River Road, Newbury Maine. The third document, dated thirteen March twenty twenty-three. Chairman, Newbury Planning Board, you remain. Dear Chairperson and Board Members, I live at Two Wilderness Drive in the Mahusick Glen Development with my wife and son. We have been year-round residents of Newry for fifteen-plus years. Our house is situated directly across from the upper entrance, Morgonite Road, to the Merrill Hill Development. On February eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, I sent you an email that was distributed at the March first, twenty twenty-three Planning Board meeting. Thank you for considering the points made in that letter. I also attended the meeting with a member with a number of other Newry citizens who are concerned about the second Sunday River chairlift plan for Merrill Hill. The purpose of this letter is threefold. One, as a concerned citizen of Newry, I request a public hearing about the second Sunday River chairlift plan for Merrill Hill before it is approved by the Planning Board. I understand from Joel Corey, Newry CEO, that another Newry citizen has already requested a public hearing about a second, about the second Sunday River chairlift plan for Merrill Hill, so it may already be in the works. I am simply seconding this request since I think that the public has some valuable information to share with the Newry Planning Board. Number two, at the March first, twenty twenty-three Newbury Planning Board meeting, Ted Baker raised an interesting and important request of Sunday River. A pedestrian foot traffic plan for the Merrill Hill Ski Lift slash Trails slash Bridges application. He raised the point that skiers could potentially park along the Monkey Brook Road in the Merrill Hill Development, in the Mahusick Glen Development, and/or in the Sunday River Golf Course, and then try to walk through the proposed new trails and lift in Merrill Hill. The following weekend, after a big snowstorm, this concern became a reality since Sunday River was intentionally parking skier cars, skiers' cars, on Sunday, March fifth, twenty twenty-three, in the Merrill Hill Development, the Sunday River Golf Club parking lot, and along Monkey Brook Road in the area of private Mahusick Glen lots that they do not own to the best of my knowledge. But even if they do own these lots, I do not think that they are able to use them for commercial purposes. Sunday River had an employee located next to my house at Two Wilderness Drive directing the skiers of Merrill Hill for parking. They had a sign in front of my house pointing towards Morgonite Road for skier parking. I doubt that the Newry Planning Board has approved Merrill Hill as a commercial parking lot for skiers' cars. In each location, Sunday River was picking up skiers using shuttle buses and moving into the Jordan Hotel or Southridge. Therefore, all these points suggest that Ted Baker's request for pedestrian foot traffic plan is justified in the light of Sunday River's behaviors and the potential for future skiers to take it upon themselves to park whenever they can find an open spot on the sides of roads surrounding the potential new lift and ski trails in Merrill Hill. Obviously, it raises a larger point about how Sunday River is using unauthorized parking areas for skiers' cars, and the Planning Board should be very clear about what is allowed and what is not allowed in the future. Number three, at the March first, twenty twenty-three Planning Board meeting, there was considerable discussion about notifying abutters within a thousand feet of this project. Peter Roberts of Sunday River said that they had attempted to notify abutters within a thousand feet of the new lift. Since Sunday River is not only applying for a new ski lift, but also three new trails and two new bridges, we think that the residents who live within a thousand feet of the total project, proposed lift, three X trails, three X, two X bridges, should be notified as abutters. This is a much larger area, so we think that it is appropriate that all owners at Mahusick Glen should be notified and perhaps other owners of property in Newry. I have attached photos of children parking along Monkey Brook Road and in the SRCG parking lot on March fifth, twenty twenty-three. On the same Sunday morning, my wife and son were witnesses to the sign in front of our house, a Sunday River employee directing, directing traffic, and the Merrill Hill parking scheme on the same day, although we do not have a photo of it. The Sunday River employee told my wife that Sunday River was in fact shuttling skiers to the Jordan Hotel and lodges using their buses. Please consider these points to the Newry Planning Board on March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, and in the future, as you review this project and its impact on the town of Newry and its closest neighbors to Merrill Hill. Sincerely, David J. Powell, skier, golfer, hiker, businessman, engineer, and longtime Newry resident. Two Wilderness Drive, PO Box twenty-five, Newry. And this is also C.C. to Peter Roberts. Stephen Kersher. And, yes, there's those two. And there are three color photographs that go along with this. Thoughts, Joel? Okay, points. Ted? Okay. Peter? Thoughts?
Yes, one thought. A pretty sensitive list of requests was given to me to deem the application complete. And reading the ordinance, I'm concerned that the wording's a little vague, but it seems like there's a thirty-day limit where I need to get, go from having a application submitted to having it deemed complete. So I'm concerned that I'm not gonna hit that. I was able to assemble some of the stuff that was requested, but I don't have it all done yet. So I am requesting a waiver if it's applicable, because the wording of the ordinance is a little unclear. Maybe I'm asking a waiver to extend the thirty days required to get all of the information together for the application. I think...
May I clarify the ordinance?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not the applicant that has thirty days, it's the board that has thirty days upon receipt of your application to review it and deem it complete or incomplete. So at the end of it, by those thirty days, we have to do that. The board did take a vote at the last meeting that we found the act, the application incomplete, which effectively stopped the first clock.
Okay.
And that clock will start again when you resubmit the second edition of the application.
Okay.
That said, your, your desire to delay or extend that thirty-day period is of interest, and there's one thing what's behind it.
Well, there's just a lot of information. And then we also have another project with a more sensitive schedule. And so I'd basically like to, you know, defer the project, defer the Merrill Hill project, which gives me some time to make sure that my resubmital is complete, because I don't want to go through another resubmital. And then it also gives me the opportunity to focus on a more time-sensitive project in the meantime.
And you had that request in writing?
Yep. I don't know if it's relevant based on what he said, but I can hand it out if you guys want to. And if it's not relevant, then we can move on.
Okay, with name?
If you got the copies, we'll take them.
All right.
There we go.
How much time are you asking for?
Uh, thirty days.
Thirty days?
So...
From when?
From the, uh...
This meeting or?
Thirty days from when the original thirty days would have ended. So it says the extension from March thirtieth to April twentieth. My concern was that we would have to go through a complete resubmital process, not a resubmital of the...
Right.
Yeah. That's fair. Okay.
Yeah. I don't, I just do for the finding facts. Joel, I'll make sure to think it's...
Do you have anything else on the Newry Health that we want to discuss? Peter, did you bring the, the escrow check or not?
No, I was not able to get it. It's coming out in Friday's check run. Uh, we do have escrow money in our escrow account, so if it makes sense to get started.
Well, that's up to the town and how they account for and eat, eat their pots, and that is separate.
Yeah. We, we should have a sit-down with somebody from accounting maybe.
Okay.
Okay.
I should, I should have the check like eleven o'clock on Friday and run it over.
It's not open on Friday.
All right.
But the, it's the whole escrow format that Sunday River and the town of Newry have had for a number of years that's this brought to light for us. And I think it'd be a really good conversation for someone in your finance department as well as probably our town administrators to talk about how we move forward from here. It's hard for us to have an open escrow account without a specific project tied to it. So it's just, it's a separate conversation not to do with Merrill Hill, but financing in general, how, how we move forward with that.
Yeah, if you were, I can just send you a offline email about that, we can figure it out.
Okay.
So the twenty-ninth of April falls between our second Newry Planning Board meeting, which is on the nineteenth, and the first Newry Planning Board meeting in May. So, uh, I guess we, you don't want to approach this subject again until the third of May?
No, I'm just trying to say that I'm, I'm pretty confident that I can have everything done by then.
Okay, so the board, you don't...
I'd like to keep it on the old business.
You know, they get it done by the nineteenth of...
April?
April.
I hope I can.
That's the second, that's the second.
The reason I put thirty days on there was not because of any meeting, it was because the wording in the ordinance said thirty days. It's somewhat arbitrary.
Okay, so, so then you would, you would be hoping that the board would have our ducks in line for the nineteenth?
Well, I'm hoping that I have my ducks in line.
Okay, but we both have our ducks in line.
Yes, yes. That's my intention.
Mr. Chairman, I will look at the applicant's request to extend or to waive the thirty-day deadline for deeming whether or not an application is complete or incomplete, and to extend it for another thirty days, which would be the April twenty-ninth. I mean, that we go ahead and approve that request.
Okay. It's been moved to second, then we, um, accept the waiver, is that the correct term?
Yeah. Accept the request.
That you what?
Ted put that the board approved the request.
Okay, approve the request for a waiver to extend our, to extend the applicant's thirty-day window until the twenty-ninth of April.
Okay.
Yeah.
You can work it back to have it.
I'm gonna make this all in the way he said it. I'm not gonna take it the way that he reiterated it. About the nineteenth.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll take Ted's motion.
I'm, I'm good with that.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor? One, two, three, it's Gary. Is that it here?
Oh, the last one.
Oh! By gosh. Okay. Where's that? That's out.
Okay.
It's a little confusing. Go ahead. It's ready. Yes. So, let's see. At this point, we're looking at Business Park Street. Barker Mountain Express Replacement Ski Lift, Dopplemeyer Six-Place Lift, Terminal Enclosures, attached maintenance building, four lots, R twelve slash twenty-six, R thirteen thirty-two and thirty-four, and R seventeen one. You're up.
All right. Okay, I sent the draft around. The only thing that I changed in the signed copy of the application that I am handing you today, or I have three signed copies.
One for Ted, one for Becky, one for me.
All right.
And this is Peter Roberts again.
Peter Roberts, Sunday River Skiway Corporation. Um, so the only difference between the signed copy and the draft copy that I sent around was because of a comment that Ted brought up at the last meeting. I'll have to check that later. The ordinance states that we have to have approval from the state before the town can issue a permit. And so I requested a waiver, basically, that we would get conditional approval, conditioned upon receipt of the state permit before we start construction. Uh, other than that, everything in the signed copy should be the same as the draft copy that I sent around.
Okay, let's see. So...
Do you and Bruce would like to share?
First question.
It's going to be this one.
First question, does the planning board have jurisdiction?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, given that the applicant is proposing a major renovation to an existing use, that being the Barker Mountain Express Chairlift, which include new buildings and structures, I therefore make a motion that the proposed project falls under Section one, C, two, A of the Unified Development Review Ordinance and that the Newry Planning Board has jurisdiction.
I'll second that.
Now, Section one, C, two, A covers site use, new buildings, and structures, which I believe you have.
Yep.
Okay. Was that a proposal?
That was my motion.
That was your motion, and I'll, I'll, I'll second it. It's been moved to second, and that we do have jurisdiction. All those in favor? One, two, three, and it's Gary. Okay. So the last meeting, there was a discussion about, um, letter of authorization.
Yeah, okay. Uh, there's a general letter of authorization that was sent by Dana at the last, last application I presented, which I think was back in September. So I have a copy of that.
Thank you.
And there's no reason for this letter to give... And there's no reason for this letter to have been rescinded since then?
Uh, no.
Should we call Dana just to double-check? So, in your final application, then you will have lines eleven, twelve, and thirteen properly filled in?
Well, as I said before, I, I, I can fill it in however way you want, but my interpretation of the application is that's for uh, representative who is not employed by the applicant, um, a third-party representative. If you want me to fill it in a different way, happy to do that.
You're the applicant's authorized agent, are you not?
Authorized agent.
This letter, this, if I believe this, if I read this letter correctly, uh, the president of Sunday River Skiway has given you agency to represent the company?
Yep.
In front of the board?
Mm-hmm.
Which is what eleven, twelve, and thirteen deal with.
If you would like it filled out a certain way, let me know.
I would, like you do. List yourself as the agent of the company, please.
Okay.
So, we have a letter saying he's authorized, part two.
Uh, we're, we're, we're at what? Is the applicant own property or?
On the check-off sheet I have, the second question is, has applicant provided proof of ownership?
I got a different check-off list. There must be two, two additions out there.
Yeah, that's why, yeah, 'cause this is the one I started last week, right?
That's a different project.
Yeah, no, no, I understand that, I fully understand.
Alright, I will, I will put this one away, because I obviously, there's a different check-off sheet out there.
I'll email it out to you guys. It should be eight, ten, twenty-two.
Okay, yeah, this one I don't think is dated.
Do you want to give them a paper copy? Do you have enough?
I do.
Can we make copies?
Yes, we can. We don't have to. Nope. Not right now.
We're on the same page. Excellent. Okay, um...
Um, okay, so not only authorization to represent the property, but does he have proof of ownership? So, um, in your application, you state lease, but you don't specify what leases are involved here?
Um, there's some disturbed area beyond the top terminal that is on a lease, um, with the owner being the Town of Bethel. Um, and then there's a big section.
That would be the Bingham Forest?
Yep. And then there's a big section of the chairlift in the middle that's on, uh, part of the Penley lease parcel, which is rented or leased from the Penley family. It's under the Skiway Corp.
So, uh, let's see, where the, 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 in that appropriate section in the application, you probably should itemize the lease instead of just say lease.
Well, one request I have for the board, um, I think like those comments make more sense as part of the review of a completed application. Um, my request would be that we focus on deeming whether or not the application's complete. Once we get a complete application, then we go through and make whatever revisions are allowed, that'd be my request.
So, you're, you're proposing that we dot the i's and cross the t's after we find the application complete?
If there are, if there's additional information needed, yeah.
If there's additional info. But if the application is, doesn't go into enough detail, such as it just says lease instead of providing an explanation, then is okay?
Well, I've presented an application that says that part of the project's on leased property. I've provided a copy of the lease, um, so...
You provided a copy of the Penley lease, you did not provide a copy of the Bethel lease.
I'm reasonably sure I did.
And you know them exactly what you emailed me?
Okay. I'll work to it.
Okay.
Okay, we're arguing over small things, so I concede you, move on. For the board, I just would like a little more than just a, you know, I know there isn't a lot of space in the application, but there's just a little more, clarity than just saying ownership and lease. You know, if there's a lease, then it doesn't take much effort, I think, in, in that application there, say, you know, lease, Penley lease dated up the, up the, book number, so-and-so page number, so-and-so of the registry of deeds.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm absolutely not trying to say that I won't do that, or it's not a reasonable request. I'm just more looking at the sequence of how this is all playing out and would like to, if it makes sense to the chairman and the rest of the board, deal with those kind of questions as part of the review of an application that's been deemed complete. Unless I...
I, I beg to differ, because what we do after the application is deemed complete is we go through the criteria of approval, which would be based on what was submitted on your application and that we deemed as complete. So, I would, don't particularly want to be dotting i's and crossing t's on your application after it's been voted complete.
Well, I'll defer to the chairman on that one.
Well, there's been a lift on that property for sixty years. Application. Um, one would think that they probably had something, but I guess you're right. We don't know that they own it, or we don't know anything about it, just that there's a lift there.
Well, I believe that would be discovered as we go through the criteria for approval, right?
Not so sure about that.
Yeah, not so sure about that either. The criteria of approval is looking at things like erosion, stormwater.
Traffic.
Traffic.
Yeah.
Uh, indigenous lands, uh, it doesn't go into the research of deeds and leases.
Well, we've got a letter of authorization.
The criteria for approval doesn't talk anything about ownership or deeds.
Would you say it did?
The criteria for approval doesn't, um, talks about ownership or leases or deeds or...
I didn't think it did.
To, to, to move, to hasten the, the process along, um, there are two leases involved, and Peter, if on the, on your final application, if you would just itemize those two leases in the application itself?
Absolutely.
Uh, both the, uh, the, the lease that you have with the Bethel Water District with the Bingham Forest?
Mm-hmm.
And the Penley lease. And why we're at it. Uh, also, you need to add up, uh, down in, uh, item twenty-nine of your application. A rather important lot is missing, which, which will hold, contain the future base terminal.
R seventeen.
And that would be R twelve dash twenty-five.
Twenty-six.
No, twenty-six is listed, twenty-five is missing. And also, um, I noticed with interest that you have lot R seventeen or map R seventeen lot one, which is on the other side of the river, listed in the application. So, is any of that hasn't, what that had to do with this?
Well, to be frank with you, I was going off of the PDF tax mats that I've always used, and I may have gotten a typo there or...
I think it might be a typo from the Merrill Hill application.
So, if you would just scratch out R seventeen lot one, unless you plan to build a, a lift from the pit on Sunday River to up and over Merrill Hill to Barker?
Alright.
Quite left.
Oh, this is going to be that parking lot.
And add a lot. Uh, Joe, can you just pull up, uh, R twelve?
Yep.
Twenty-five?
It's right there. This big, it, it looks like it's the big lot.
It does?
Yeah.
If you, if you highlight, if you click on it with information, it should highlight it. And you can see it goes right over the proposed area of where you're going to put your base terminal?
Okay.
I can boot these guys.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, given that the parcels of land on which the proposed project is to be built or erected upon are either owned or leased by the applicant, I therefore make a motion that the applicant satisfies the condition of ownership.
I'll second that. All in favor? One, two, three. Uh, number three on the checklist, does any board member have any bias or conflict of interest?
Mr. Chairman, I am an employee of the Sunday River Skiway. However, my job title, description, and level of pay in no way empower me to influence or to be influenced by the Sunday River senior management team. I therefore request that a motion be made by other members of the board, board to this effect, discussed and voted upon by other members of the board, whether or not I am biased or unbiased in this matter.
Um, I make a motion that, um, that, given Ted's pay grade, he is not biased by this application or his portfolio. Okay.
I will second that motion.
Uh, the move to second is that Ted is not a person of bias or conflict of interest. All those in favor?
I abstain.
One, two, and Ted abstains. Oh, let's see. Is any additional escrow needed?
I will make a motion that the applicant be required to pay an additional fee to aid the planning board in review of this application as allowed and defined in the Unified Development Review Ordinance, section ten dash B dash six, at either fifty percent of the application fee or twenty-five hundred dollars, whichever is greater. For this application, the amount will be eleven thousand dollars. Assuming that it was twenty-two million or the cost of the...
Could I ask why, what the purpose of a third-party review is on this application?
Again, I object to your use of review. We are hiring a consultant to aid us in reviewing the, your application and to provide technical assistance to the board when it comes to matters of, of, uh, stormwater, sediment, uh, the planning board, the direction of buildings, uh, the removal of debris by blasting, et cetera. None of the board members are engineers, and, uh, I feel that we, the board needs consulting, we could use the help of an outside consultant in this manner.
Do you mind allowing to make some field of the chairman on this?
One part of me says, well, we just, we just required it from Merrill Hill, so why shouldn't we require it for this one? That's my logic behind it. Um... I guess we're acquiring escrow for Merrill Hill. We, there is escrow money currently in their account that the town holds?
One thousand four hundred and forty dollars and forty-two cents.
Yes.
But we're not sure what this is earmarked for. That's why it needs to be a conversation between their finance department and our town administrator, because it seems like we've been just acting as a bank for any type of application fees, sub, you know, subdivision, site plan, any type, building permit fees, we always take it out of this account, and that's not what escrows should be used for. They should be used specifically for each project individually.
Right, and, and once the project is complete?
We hand them back their money.
And evidently, we haven't been doing that.
I don't think that's the way the previous administration in Sunday River as a business have operated. But I'm guessing, I've been here just a little under two years.
As an expansion on that, um, it would be improper accounting-wise to apply money, escrow money collected for one project to another project.
Yeah, it sounds like we need to clear that four thousand dollars.
One thousand four hundred.
One thousand?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I was hoping it was forty-one hundred. Uh, um, and look at this as a separate project, which it is. So, um, yeah, I think we need an escrow account.
I made a motion, sir.
You made a motion.
I did make a motion. Would you like me to read it again?
Sure.
The motion is that the applicant be required to pay an additional fee to aid the planning board in review of the application as allowed and defined in the U D R O, section ten dot B dot six, that is either fifty percent of the application fee or two thousand five hundred dollars, whichever is greater, assuming that the application fee, which has not been made public?
Not yet.
Is, uh, was twenty-two million, or twenty-two hundred or whatever?
Thousand.
Twenty-two thousand, there, the escrow account would then be at, start out at eleven thousand dollars.
Oh, my. Let's go check, change.
Um... Again, what does not use for, in this project towards consulting fees and whatnot, would then be returned to the, the applicant at completion of the review? Or the application process, I should say.
I'll second Ted's motion. Uh, discussion?
No, I mean, I, 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 I agree. I think we'll, we need to get this clarified and, and make sure that all the ducks are in a row.
That's our job, ducks in a row.
Yeah.
All those in favor? One, two, three, and it's Gary. I, at this point, don't know what that number is. But we'll get there, alright? Well, the next one on the checklist is inform the applicant that all revised or additional documents, plans must be submitted to the planning board for review at least ten days prior to the board's meeting, at which the, the information will be discussed. He already knew that, right? Uh, duly done. Has application fee been paid?
It has.
It has.
Twenty-two thousand dollars.
Oh, my.
Let me look this in the safe. Check number? Check number is zero, 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 eight, three, six, seven, two. Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay, and the next one is assign a number to it, which, three? Two, three, dash, two, seven, six.
Uh, two, seven, two, seven, five is Merrill Hill, correct?
Two, seven, five is Merrill Hill, yes.
Right.
Did you get Merrill Hill in there?
Oh, what?
Did you add Merrill Hill in there?
Yes, I did that before the meeting started. Well, they called this Barker Chairlift number one replacement. The Barker Mountain Express Chairlift Replacement. This is number six place. Okay, that's fine.
Did you repeat that please?
Application number?
Yes, please.
Two-three dash two-seven-six.
Thank you.
Do you boys want to go through the application page by page?
We've already discussed the eleven, twelve, and thirteen need to be filled out. That is the authorized agent.
I'm gonna jump ahead and say twenty-four and twenty-five have also been covered.
And the next one would be twenty-four, where a little more information as to the lease or leases such as, uh, name on the lease, date entered, any termination date, current standing, et cetera.
You can always attach a piece of paper to the application with that information and say, "See enclosure so-and-so" if it doesn't fit between the lines.
So would you prefer that in lieu of me attaching a copy of the lease?
Yes. Well, you can give us the lease electronically so that if we want to look at it, we have it available.
Because typically what I've done is just got a copy of the lease off the registry or deed or whatever is applicable and sent it. So I'm trying to decipher here what you guys want as far as presentation.
In case of the deed that you're talking about here, which is, I believe, thirty-six pages long, if you would like to sit by, we dutifully read through that at the planning board meeting, that would be...
What about annotating it like we did for Merrill Hill? Little sticky some, you know, highlight it.
Highlighted, whatever.
Yeah.
But again, that can be done electronically. I don't think you need to print it out. If you, that, if you, if you attach an attach, if you enclose an attachment to the application detailing where that information can be found, any board member saw and clanked and then go look at it without having to go on a fishing expedition through forty-eight, thirty-eight, forty-eight pages of registry of deeds.
Yeah, and I'm fine with whatever you guys pick. I just, you know, my past tactic has been to try to get it from, sometimes getting stuff from the registry of deeds is half the challenge, but if you just want me to decipher book and page number and then describe the deed, I can do that.
I would, if, as long as it's correct, that would be... Chances are that there'd be one board member that invited to check it.
And on line number twenty-nine, we're gonna strike map R seventeen lot one.
Correct.
What was the line?
And add R twelve dash twenty-five.
I have a question about number thirty-four. It says no D, or is that number D? I don't...
Probably a typo.
Okay, scratch that then.
You say thirty-four?
Yeah.
Top of the page.
You said it's number thirty-four, right?
Yes.
Mine, where are you?
So the...
I'm, you, you have, you have, you have...
There's something different than you said.
You do.
Number thirty-four, the application.
Oh, in here.
The booklet that he gave us.
Yeah.
Right. How come his page is different than my page?
Well, because you have a final copy. Maybe they caught it and cleaned it up.
Ah.
No, it's right there. You scrabbled it out.
Right, his, you know, his is different.
What's he looking at?
Are you on the right?
Yeah, his, the front should say, Joel. It says Merrill Hill.
Why not Merrill Hill?
I'm sorry, I was looking at Merrill Hill. No, 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 no.
I might get the wrong thing.
The first seven copies they delivered to us don't have any writing on the front.
Yeah, I have the title sheet at Joel's.
Besides handwritten.
Right, I wrote that.
Hold it, let's...
Yeah, you're in Merrill Hill.
All right, I can't do my question, man.
Right.
So there's...
I've got one.
So the one I left at your house, one handed to you, looks just like this, but it says Barker on it. I got that. Hang on.
I've got two in front of me.
Well, one of those probably belongs to one of your...
Oh, no, you have, you have your original and then you have the signed copy. You sure you can hand one over to...
This is the signed copy that is you, is the one Peter brought tonight. This is the copy that I left for you. I labeled.
Use one or the other, but not both.
As long as he gets the right one.
Let me get it back.
Correct.
Number thirty-four, which is at the top of page number... So that, that N-O space D is just a typo?
I believe so.
Okay, and then the only butters that we have is the condominium, Sunrise Condominium and the Town of Bethel.
Yeah, we can scrutinize that more if they'd like.
Nope, I already have.
I think that's good. I have verified the P W S ninety-two hundred is the Public Water Supply Sunday River Upper Cistern System.
Yep.
That is number thirty-eight.
So on number thirty-eight, I have C marked.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
So you want number, thirty-eight needs to be changed or?
Nope.
No, okay.
No, it's fine.
I'm just letting the board know that I have verified it is, that exists.
So, just question number thirty-nine. Identified method of fire protection. So, I mean, there are going to be buildings there, right? I mean, you have the drive and, you know, return.
Mm-hmm.
So, is it just a, is there any method of fire suppression for those? Do they have anything or just run out of the building and run away?
Uh, there's no fire suppression system in those buildings. The architects did some research and national fire code and determined that we didn't need them.
That's curious.
Yep.
What's the, and the status of your main D E P permit?
Um, in review.
Far along?
Close to being done, I hope. The D E P is very understaffed and it's made it hard to get stuff.
It took almost eight more months for coal firms to get approval and that's just yurts and tree boxes. So, these are under three thousand, I'm going back to thirty-nine.
Mm-hmm.
Under three thousand square feet?
No, they're not over three thousand square feet.
But they're, how have, how much life is inside of these?
Life meaning?
People, public.
Um, there would only be people living the lift, generally speaking, and then you have a couple of operators in the maintenance building. They have two people.
Okay, that's why they determined that it didn't need sprinklers. Okay, thank you.
The purpose, the purpose of the building, for your information, is, um, the Lexan bubbles on the chairlift carriers will oxidize in the sunlight, so they have to be parked undercover. And so the purpose of the building is just a place to get the carriers out of the sunlight and for storage during the summer.
Okay, thank you.
But people actually operate these are basically outside.
Well, no, the operator will be inside, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, the lift, the, the, where the customer sits on the chair is totally enclosed.
It's outside undercover.
Yeah, and the operator is in an operating booth is also enclosed.
Okay.
As opposed to other lifts where they're out in the open.
It's kind of like a massive garage. A chair comes through and passes.
Yeah, these are big buildings.
The D E P permit's been in since November.
So I gotta ask, number forty-three. That this project does not anticipate any significant increase in traffic, but you're going to a six-person lift to get whatever, how many more people up the mountain? And, um, you know, just what I've seen for traffic this winter, I mean, it's, it's been abominable. I mean, it, it, it's just, it baffles me, the, the traffic coming in, you know, and granted, it's not every day, but boy, there are a lot of days this winter that, that traffic has been insane. I guess I just don't understand how you can say that there's not a significant increase when you're adding more lifts with more capacity to bring more people up the mountain. How does that not increase?
Bruce, may I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
That we save this discussion for criteria of approval. I will number C, which is traffic.
Okay.
And allow, defer to the applicant to be able to get his application being complete expeditions. Although, been forewarned.
Keep that one in mind. I own a prize.
Mr. Chair, uh, number one four, the fire chief took no issue. I've had no comment from Oxford County Sheriff's Department and the newer deputy road commissioner takes no exception to it right now.
Deputy road commissioner?
That's me.
Who is the road commissioner then?
This is left there.
Ah, okay. So this is the second replacement for Barker Mountain Chair?
Um, so we went from a fixed group to a hole-in-bury. No, hole-in-bury was the fixed group, so it's gone detachable, got renovated. So you have a second replacement.
Did it work from a T-bar in that area in the early, early, early days?
I don't think so.
Only because of that?
Yeah.
T-bar is a different location.
The original Lock Mountain T-bar, yeah.
Yeah, there were, there were two of them, but they were both over the line.
Yeah, T-one and T-two. So this is going to be parallel to the existing lift?
Yeah.
Yep, in a new, newly cleared strip?
Um, I don't think the center line of the lift is necessarily in a newly cleared strip, but we're gonna have to clear strip of trees to get to there at seven and twenty sides.
Joel, I do have large scale. Do you want to see large scale?
I, I brought full sets too.
I'm hanging up there too.
I think that's what this is.
Yep.
Okay.
You have them.
Which page are you looking at, Bruce?
Looking at maps.
No, what's it say underneath your file?
Underneath my file? Uh, Barker Mountain Chair, number one.
Should have a number, A-one-S-two.
Or A or map one of what, there, there, in the box.
Well...
I don't have a glass, I don't have... Top terminal site plan.
Nope.
This is top terminal site plan. So as soon as I get her to talk.
Okay, I got it.
What are they gonna do with the old lift?
Junk it.
Really? They'll sell it like some other mountain?
Oh, we'll tear it to pieces and sell parts of it.
Yeah.
Most of the structural stuff is gonna go in the scrapyard.
We could put some metal, we got plenty of it, huh?
Mr. Hall doesn't run that second-hand ski area equipment newsletter anymore?
There's a guy in Person City, Nevada, that has a junkyard for these, and so I'm sure we'll reach out to him, but I don't know how much stuff he's real willing to ship to Nevada. Is, is worth it for him or not?
So you got auction off the chairs?
Probably not, no.
Three more tie, I'll, I'll go steal a few. So this is going to be right on the top of the mountain.
Where is that?
Yeah, the unload point is the same horizontal station and offset about fifteen feet from where it is now. It's really not that much.
Right, right beside the old one.
You are going to scalp the mountain.
Well, the building at the top's pretty big, so we need to make some space for people to get around it. There's some tree clearing that needs to happen, and some blasting needs to happen to make that happen.
So behind that informational signboard that you've left there right now, is it gonna be leveled off?
Well, I wouldn't say all, but there's definitely a strip of it that needs to get stripped and then blasted and removed, yeah.
And that debris will go?
Um, most of it's gonna get crushed on site and used for structural build.
I'd really like to see dump trucks come down the hill.
You don't want to be... I'd like to see the crusher go up the hill.
Yeah. Yeah. There's so many people jumping in the pond, it's not long enough.
That's, yeah, that's why it's gonna move over.
Oh, really?
Well, and then there's the people that accidentally fall in pond and don't like it, so.
That's what we jumped into though, for a tough mountain, right? Only time I've ever seen the pond.
Boss, Bruce?
I don't know. Seems okay to me.
Boss Ted?
With the caveat that we can come back and look at it should our consultant come up with any questions, I find the application is complete. As amid with the edits that we have discussed in this meeting.
Strike goes.
I'll, I will, with time pressure. Right now, he's asking for my thoughts, so. And you, Bruce?
Um, quite a document. I think it's complete.
Well then, without further ado, Mister Chairman, I will make a motion that the application as submitted and edited at this meeting be found complete.
I'll second that. Boss Bruce? I will agree that it is complete. It has been proposed and seconded that this document as edited is complete. Does that sound good? All those in favor? One, two, three. So carry.
Just out of curiosity, because I guess I really didn't pick up on it, like, so where's the drive, up top?
No, it's bottom drive.
Bottom drive?
Yeah.
And then, where do they, so are they storing the, the chairs up top, or the bubbles up top, or down the bottom two?
Um, half of them go up top and half of them go from the bottom. And they nest like their curtains.
Yeah. Now I have the loads somewhat more balanced.
Well, yeah, they start it up and take it apart.
Isn't the Jordan, is the Jordan eight that way too, with sort of top and bottom?
If that seems fair, split.
Hiking drill's gonna be impacted this summer?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, good.
Mister Chairman, I moved that having found the application complete and seeing that we only have twenty minutes remaining in our session, that we table this application for review of criteria approval until the next meeting.
Do you wanna go to the dis-?
Or, well, my, uh, uh, let me rescind that. We need to, uh, we, we have a couple other quick questions we can deal with. Site, site visit?
Yes, is, the next question is, is a site visit recommended for this project? I don't need one.
No, I, I, I don't need one either. I have a pretty good idea of being up there enough that, you know what's happening.
I make a proposal that a site visit is not recommended for this project. All those in favor? One, two, three.
Well, you wanna, is your proposal a motion?
Yes.
And could it be cited?
I'll second it.
Sorry.
She can never leave. I have to put this into finding it back, so.
Yeah.
Perhaps have the whole picture.
Next, is a public hearing recommended for this project? Uh, note, a public hearing is required for major subdivisions. A public hearing is recommended or required, um, applicant must be found, application must be found complete before public hearing. Uh, the town office must be notified in time to post notification. And a month, and a public hearing must be held within thirty days.
I personally do not feel that we need to have a public hearing for this project.
Pretty much straightforward and... That's sort of the way I feel, and I don't, go on.
Well, I would, I would make a motion that the public hearing is not required for this project.
I will second that motion. It has been moved and seconded that a public hearing is not required for this project. All those in favor? One, two, three. Next question, how will the applicant meet the performance guarantee requirement? Usually, performance guarantees are subdivisions, right?
Writing in the U D R O is such that all, I think it applies to all and can not be waived.
No, can wait?
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
In the U D R O, it says a performance guarantee applies to required infrastructure improvements, but there's not a clear definition of what that means. I don't know if there's been a interpretation of that in the past. Required, to me implies that, that the performance guarantee applies to any conditions of approval that you guys place on the project.
Same one?
Well, let's look at the ordinance for a second, okay, seven?
Thank you.
Where is it, Peter?
I gotta find it now, hold on.
I believe it's chapter twenty-one, or section twenty-one.
Section what?
Twenty-one.
I have some guaranteed performance guarantees. All required for infrastructure improvements.
So it doesn't, my interpretation is that a performance guarantee is not required, is required for required improvements. What does required improvements mean?
My thought, required improvements imply infrastructure, roads, bridges. Is that a fact?
Required by who, required by the board?
Required by the project. You know, subdivisions require a road. And this is not a subdivision.
Like, my, excuse me, my past, like, experience with this type of thing is that the performance guarantee is meant to protect the interests of the taxpayers. And so if the board is saying, okay, we'll approve this, but we require these infrastructure improvements to do it, such as water main extensions, you know, a breakdown of a road, something like that, that is what the performance guarantee would apply to, because then it guarantees the taxpayers that that piece of the project will be complete. So that's not exactly how this is written, but it's also not clear how it's written, and so I guess I'm looking for some clarification.
I think you'll find elsewhere in the U D R O that you are also required to submit a cost breakdown of the project, other than just a gross amount. And that would be an opportunity to pull out costs related, in this case, to machinery, to infrastructure, and what else? And therefore substantially reduce the amount of performance fee that you would have to provide the town.
I did, um, I did elaborate on the budget, um, after the comment that was made last time. I don't know if it's worth discussing right now, um, but the, the way that the ordinance is worded leads me to believe that the performance reviews, or the performance guarantee is not applicable here, because we're not, as of yet, being required to make any infrastructure improvements that would benefit the public. We're not doing anything on a public rights of way. So to me, I guess, required improvements means something that is required of the developer by the water district, or the fire department, or somebody like that. And so I'm looking for clarification, I guess, on how this is completely interpreted.
Well, the section of performance guarantees does not allow for a waiver of a performance guarantee in totality. It does specify that it needs to be on a certain part of the project. So it's on the applicant to provide the cost breakdown to allow the board to determine what the amount of performance guarantee should be.
Okay, so I got the cost breakdown, if you guys are interested.
Sure.
And just wanted to throw out to Chairman and the rest of the board that based on my interpretation of the ordinance, a performance guarantee wouldn't be applicable here. Not asking for a waiver, just, um, my interpretation is that it's not applicable at all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does the code enforcement officer see any thing or think of anything that might, in your professional opinion, be infrastructure?
The infrastructure in, in my head, when I think about that, comes to the foundations that we're gonna need for the buildings, the actual structure that we need, whether it be the, the building foundation, the blasting up at the top, you know, your electrical is there, the, the lift way, physical way through, through the mountain is already there. I don't like building a road. If it fails, hear me out, if Sunday River fails, and as new area, the town feels it's important, we finish this lift, we wanna make sure that we have the capacity to do so to protect the taxable interests up there, and, and sell it, if need be. I'm going through a lot of whatevs and twenty years of litigation real quick. I just, I think it's important that, you know, the terminal enclosures and the maintenance building, um... I don't think, if you could break out chairlift and utilities, I think that would make that number smaller. I think the utilities is part of the infrastructure.
I think we can't have the chairlift on the line item by itself for, uh, terminal enclosure.
I would.
Well, so if I could clarify really quick.
Yeah.
Chairlift and utilities, that is only the cost of procuring materials, doesn't have anything to do with installation.
Okay.
So the chairlift installation, site development, would be the number we'd be looking at?
Well, that's open to interpretation, because the ordinance is very unclear.
And, and I, I'm gonna actually, infrastructure in our ordinance is not well defined.
Is not what?
Is not well defined. It's something that we need to work on. Yes.
And, and also the word required, required infrastructure, I think there needs to be some clarification of who's requiring it, what is infrastructure. It's like kind of two different questions going on there for me as I read through the ordinance.
So terminal enclosures and maintenance building, that's the actual construction, as well as the materials for those two buildings?
Minus site development, yep.
Minus site, good, okay.
Yeah, I'm just looking, um, section twenty-one, paragraph eight, and, um... The more I read the law, the confused. One part of me says, go in this direction, the other part of me says, go in that direction. I can see your point, Peter.
In, in that section, Mister Chairman, there is a, there is a sentence that says, "The planning board shall not waive the requirement for a performance guarantee."
I noticed that, I noticed that. It says, "All required infrastructure improvements to be accepted to maintain by the town, or ten percent of the total construction costs, all required infrastructure improvements to remain private." It should certainly help this project remains private. Total construction costs.
Twenty-two million.
Hmm?
Twenty-two million.
Yeah, well, promotions, contingency. Gentlemen, you've all got great hair. Hold my hand.
I'm, I'm, I guess I'm still kind of confused.
Well, I would be confused too, and like, obviously, Joel may have different interpretations of this, but to me, I see required infrastructure improvements means anything that you require me to do. None of this so far is being required, this is something we're doing on our own accord and private property for our own interest. And so I'm petitioning that this is not applicable, but it's free to decide.
Okay. Months ago, wasn't it discovered that we never ever had anything to do with performance guarantees?
At least not in recent memory.
Maybe that's why we're stumbling up.
Well, I, I think if you, you go back far enough, that there was actually some performance guarantees collected, but I don't have them, I can't fathomize them, we're talking
Yeah, not, not.
Twenty-five years ago.
Yeah, not my knowledge.
Well, in recent memory, we did require a recent applicant to put in a performance guarantee that covered the cost of, in that case, uh, access.
Yes, the two private roads.
To the two private roads that were part of the, in this case, a minor subdivision. So we have, in recent, recently, collected a performance fee for that. The, the issue here is that, that we, the board, cannot subjectively interpret the U D R O, and the big bugaboo there says, "The planning board shall not waive the requirement for a performance guarantee." So we need to somehow define in this particular instance, or this application, what is infrastructure? And the costs associated with that infrastructure, if there is infrastructure.
I think there's not really a very good definition of that.
Well, one part says, oh, it's twenty-two million dollars. And the other part says, no, it's just a chairlift installation site development. Oh, no, it's including the terminal enclosures and maintenance building.
So if we just go to a very basic version of the dictionary, yeah, it's the physical structures and facilities, buildings, roads, power supplies, et cetera, needed for the operation of a society or enterprise.
Well, you are enterprise.
Yeah, I mean, that's a very basic definition, we can visit that later, but that's just Webster.
And then required infrastructure.
Yeah, the way we word it in our ordinance, circling.
So I'll draw an example if I, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Let's say I'm building a Dollar General, very
Large what?
A Dollar General.
Okay.
You guys are all really excited about it, but you make me add a breakdown lane to the Sunday River in front of the store. To me, that's required infrastructure, it's on a public freeway, it's being required by the town. Required infrastructure as far as the building goes is not being required by the town and is therefore not subject to this performance guarantee. That's my interpretation and I'm looking for input, I guess.
Ted's gears are working.
So in another hypothetical, if you're putting in a subdivision that has a mile and a half of road that services the subdivision, is the, the construction of that road infrastructure in your mind?
It's, it would only be required infrastructure if I have sold the lots that are beyond the extent of the road, if that makes sense. Me as a developer building a road, if I decide that I'm done building it, it's an out of money.
So what protection then, assuming that, that you follow in an argument you made earlier that the performance guarantee is to protect the town, or someone made that argument. What protection does that give the town if the subdivision goes feral and the road is never completed? And yet, there is one sold lot inaccessible otherwise.
Going back to the way the ordinance is written though, the ordinance isn't really set up to deal with that kind of scenario. And then also, I guess in that scenario, the town would require a bond to finish the road before the lot could be sold, right?
Not sure.
I thought the ordinance, I thought no lots could be sold until the roads were
The roads were completed, that, that is correct.
So maybe that example of ours is not the most applicable, but.
So I think we need to go back and decide what would be required infrastructure on this project.
I'm going to say it's terminal enclosures, maintenance building, and chairlift installation and site development.
Okay, now what about all the stormwater and sediment protection required under current regulations?
I think that's kind of covered under site development.
Okay.
I mean, then those two numbers add up to, just dirty math, a little under seven million dollars.
And then you want 10% of it?
Yeah.
Would be seven hundred thousand.
Instead of 2.2 million.
You got Mr. Scanlon's gears burning there?
I know, didn't we, at one point, when we had something in the ordinance that a long time ago, I think that Webster was the chair, that we couldn't figure out, they kept going on and on. Read about having, um, Dave Bondi presented with Amy, asked the attorney about it, our clarification. That was a long time ago, it was the last stage.
That is all true.
Uh, we could ask the attorney for clarification.
For clarification and interpretation of that.
Yeah, we're not going to go over old ordinances, but
But there was a, a section that the board couldn't come to agree on. Yeah, and it ended up having the town attorney, the chairman, back then, submit the question to the town attorney to get his input, um, interpretation.
That might have been a shell question too.
Yeah, shell of the round for Doug.
No, I think it was Jim's.
Okay, let's do that.
I, I have a question. I know the board can't waive the performance guarantee. Doesn't say anything that we can set a different amount or a different percentage. I don't have, but my book, so.
So we can take out possibly chairlift and terminal?
Not, not take anything out, but
Without asking you, Peter, to divulge proprietary information from the company, how is this project being financed?
Um, I believe it's been
Boyn, the Boyn corporate.
All right, I don't think they want to go down to the local savings bank and pull out twenty-two million dollars.
Funded through Boyn USA Corporate Capital Funds.
Most of Boyn USA Corporate Capital Funds, and I don't have every detail, so not the right person to ask. So my understanding is that there's private bond offerings that they use to earn money.
C N L, are you looking at anymore?
I don't. The, the amount would a letter of credit, item E of performance guarantees under section E, uh, well, actually, E, sorry, 21E. You have to hold that right.
I think that's a wonderful idea.
All right, so I was instructed by my supervisor that we'll provide you with whatever performance guarantee that you want. So I'm happy to discuss it further, I think there's, um, there's not a tight time when I'm getting this done, right? We don't have to figure this out until shortly before or, or admissible, right?
I think it's five days before construction.
Well, that's for the payment.
For the David.
Um, I would say that probably prior to, uh, the final yea or nay on the project, this would need to be ironed out.
Well, the, the reason I asked it is because, um, I, I see the preference on what type of performance guarantee we offer is going to come from someone that's not me. And so I'd love to have a chance to sit down with that person and say, what's your preference here? Order these and, you know, these, most of these favorite, and then we can go back and have a discussion with you guys and see if we align.
Joel, what do we need to do to get it, our attorney to review this?
The request of this board, and I bring it to Loretta tomorrow morning.
Okay, and she can authorize it or does it have to go to the select board?
I don't believe it needs to go to select board, but I can find out.
We have, we have un, un, committed funds and.
We do, but the board does, yes. In the scenario that I talked about, a motion was made by the board to, um, authorize Dave Bonney back then to bring it to, um.
Mister Chairman, I will make a motion that we reach out to the town attorney for his clarification on section twenty-one A in particular, W D R O, while the applicant discusses with his financial supervisors, bureau's, the different options that are outlined in the U D R O.
Can I answer that?
And then that we readdress this at the next meeting.
Can I answer that?
You start with me.
Uh, I think the, the, the attorney ought to have a copy of this.
Okay. So, the motion's been amended that the cost breakdown has been submitted to the board, be included with that inquiry. So the motion then will read that we solicit advice from the town attorney on section twenty-one A, types of guarantees and what is required infrastructure. And that, in that inquiry, the, uh, cost breakdown of the project as submitted by the applicant on March fifteenth be included in there.
Peter, can you hand me a clean copy of that?
In Word or PDF?
PDF, please.
Oh, I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded, Ted's motion to have the town attorney, um, review this section twenty-one A. Um, is that good enough?
In, in the meaning of required infrastructure.
Okay, all those in favor? One, two, three, it's carried. And we'll table this discussion.
Mister Chairman, in view of the fact that the time is now two minutes after eight, I move that we extend the session for another thirty minutes till eight thirty-two.
Um, I'll second that motion. All, all those in favor? One, two, three, okay, eight thirty-two. Um, Peter, waivers if you'd like.
I requested one waiver, um, for the requirement that I have state approval before the town issues a permit. Um, and I kind of explained this at the last meeting, but basically, all of these regulatory entities have these rules that everybody else has to approve first, and so, um, it's helpful if each issues a condition of approval that requires approval by all of the other jurisdictional entities before we start construction. In that way, there isn't a sequence of when we have to get the permits, but rather, we just can't start until we have all the permits. Um, and I, so I, that was the only waiver that I requested.
Sounds reasonable, mate.
I'm not even sure. My only observation is that once it leaves, once the applicant is approved, rarely do we see them again under the concern that now approved application.
This is true.
And there is room for, for items falling into the crack here.
Yeah, with the condition of approval, call one, CEO. Sure. Yeah, and I'll have vibrating phone reminder, it's still gonna keep me right on my toes.
So if there's a, if there's a concern, um, a condition of approval could be worded so that we have to submit the DEP order to the CEO.
The, the, Peter brought up, he's been on my mind for a long, long time. You know, this one, this one, this one, that, how, in order to make it happen, but we don't talk to them, they don't talk to us.
The, the U D R O does specify that all state and federal permits be approved prior to, or be a condition of approval.
Yeah, and I think you'll find that a lot of those state requirements say that ours comes first.
Right, but that nobody has come forth with the actual state statute that says that, or, or department regulation that states that. Are you aware of the department regulation in the Department of Environmental Protection that says that town approval is required before DEP, uh, permits?
I would have to look into it, I could bring you a board order that just says as a criteria of approval that all town projects need to be, that projects falling under the jurisdiction of town permitting need to have town projects in place before construction, if that makes sense.
No, it doesn't.
In the, uh, in the bottom, moving this along, can we table this one?
Yes.
Okay.
In fact, Mister Chairman, I would like to, uh, in view of the fact that we still have other business to conduct tonight, that at this stage, we table the review of the, this application until our next meeting where we'll pick up conditions of approval.
I think it's a wonderful idea.
Go ahead, I have some more questions. I brought full-size stamp copies of the drawing, so am I supposed to submit those now, or when we go sign them?
Uh, when we go to sign them, I would prefer, that means I have to keep them perfect.
I'm just saying, yeah.
For the, for the registry.
Bet you have the responsibility of.
Yeah, I'm gonna lean on your, your shoulders, Peter.
Yeah.
Thank you, but I'll hold it, I'll, I'll.
No.
Okay. Make sure we keep the registry, yeah.
I think I made a motion.
Well, that's all good register, really.
Yeah, you said that, um, that you'd like the board to table the application, but you never actually said.
I'm, I, Mister Chairman, I make a motion that we table the further, further review of this application until our next meeting, which is April fifth. And at which time we'll pick up conditions of approval for this application.
I'll second that. Okay, I'll second that.
Oh, Bruce, I did.
All right, did, did that, okay. Uh, all those in favor? One, two, three, good.
Um, Mister Chairman, could I just run through my list of requests of your, your, your.
Sure, wonderful idea.
Uh, application questions eleven through thirteen, I need to list myself as an agent of the company.
Eleven through fourteen, if you flip the pages, there's one more section, but that's the same thing.
Number twenty-four through twenty-five, I need to send the copy of the Beaufort Water District lease and revise the application and include the booking page numbers of the parcels and leases. Uh, number twenty-nine, correct the parcels, um, remove R seventeen dash one and add R twelve dash twenty-six.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Twenty-five. Um, I'll bring in check for the eleven thousand dollars to cover consulting fees. Um, there's a typo on question thirty-four that needs to be corrected. Bruce indicated that I should prepare a statement regarding traffic. Um, and then I will discuss with our financial team what the preferred performance guarantee would be, so that we can have that discussion. And then I will email a copy of the budget to Joel to forward to the attorney.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, who's in?
Do you want to edit number eighty-three and formally request your waiver for DEP approval prior to town approval? Make it as a condition, do you want to type that in there?
I thought I did.
Says no.
Is that the final, final copy?
No. That's the other, thank you.
That was the one that I put in the front of copy. All right, awesome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Peter. I've never seen him fly, an old Dean Shandy shirt.
You need to get yourself one now.
I don't wear fly.
I think you put the red green on.
Come on, all right. Okay, let's sort out this mess. Yeah, I'm done. Oh, number five, reports.
Uh, there is a report from the town administrator.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry. The escrow accounts, we all have a copy of this.
Yeah.
I mean, we've hit on it a little bit, uh, what Sunday River has, the performance guarantee from the subdivision that's from last fall. We do, we have some other subdivision escrow money, we don't know where that's from. That's why they need to be separated and clearly defined, so when we do start having the engineer submit bills, I will probably use the permit number that we assign as a board, and then, you know, will it be, depending on what it is, whether it's just a review, or whether it's actual inspections on site, I mean, we're gonna have to define these very carefully to keep track of them.
Something we've never, uh.
Never, we have, we have, we just wrote a check, I guess, I don't know. Yeah, our auditor was pretty strict with us, and when she did look at our books and said, no, no, you need to find this, so that's good.
Mister Chairman, I'll make the motion that we request the town administrator to return any existing undefined escrow money to Sunday River. And that in the future, all escrow be segregated and accounted for to the project it was, it belongs to.
Um, not just Sunday River, but whoever else might be in there. Um, I'll second your motion.
I will amend the motion that, that we, town administrator return all undesigned escrow or escrow from past accounts that are not current, so that we only, and this is not part of the motion, maybe, we only leave the, uh, New River.
Correct, and the eight hundred eighty-four dollars.
Well, we have to figure out who, who that goes to.
Yeah.
You're in terms of taxpayers for reduction in their taxes, right?
Yes, you're all getting a reset.
At all costs.
Uh, so, the motion is that, that we request the town administrator to re, to return all previous escrow account as to rightful owners that are undesigned as to the project that they evolved from. And that in the future, all escrow be collected and accounted for to the project that it is related to.
I will second that motion. I've moved and seconded that we that we act on Ted's motion, all those in favor? One, two, three. Anything else?
Just, uh, but just, we just out of curiosity, so this, this escrow money from Sunday Rivers, is that was for some other project that, or is that just something that sits there?
We, they've used it for building permit application, application fees, building permit fees, um, yeah, they've used it for a little bit of everything, there's never really been any true use.
It's been like a banker now.
Yeah, so, so then that, that will go back to them and we'll start at zero, and then maybe when they come back and everything will be designated to a certain account.
Sounds like Peter has a check coming from twenty-five, from twenty-five hundred dollars, we will return this, and then everything is clear, what it's for.
And you will get an accounting that, well, how that twenty-five hundred dollars is spent.
Right, exactly.
Or in the.
Specifically, eleven thousand dollars, how that was.
Yes.
Right, specifically.
Yeah.
Uh, then I also, uh, for, can we move on to the business?
Are you done?
Yes, move on.
Uh, open discussion, you mean?
Yeah, open discussion.
Yes.
Um, we have discussed a consultant for both of these projects, and Derek Palmer, did they give it?
Oral.
Girl, girl.
Oral Palmer.
Um, I therefore, uh, move that we engage Girl Palmer to assist us in the review of application to twenty-three dash two seven five and application twenty-three dash two seventy-six. And that we engage them ASAP.
Well, forward the applications and the DEP permits and everything else on to them.
I'll second that. Uh, moved and seconded that we engage Oral Palmer as our third party, um, reviewer, all those in favor? One, two, three. Anything else?
Um, I would also like to discuss engaging a third-party inspector for both of these projects.
So we didn't just do that?
No.
That was just reviewing.
That was the reviewer to review the project in the, I, uh, in view of the fact that our code enforcement officer is got a stove with, what, fifteen burners on it?
Yeah.
Is, is, it does not have the time nor the expertise to overview the details of sediment and so stormwater erosion systems, uh, and construction of foundations, et cetera. That we assist the code enforcement officer by engaging a third-party inspector as allowed in the U D R O. And that is in, I believe, the section for inspections.
Yes.
And it also, it also under, uh, criteria of approval may yet go back for more money to cover the cost of that inspector. And.
I will second Ted's motion.
You just needed.
No, I haven't made a motion yet, I'm just, I'm just throwing this out for discussions.
Oh.
And, uh, the chances are that the DEP permit will be requiring Sunday River to have a say, a, se, out of um, third-party.
They'll have their own third-party, like, or Merrill Hill.
Third-party inspection, will be submitting reports, which right now we receive, in the case of Merrill Hill, that we don't have the expertise to dive into and digest and, and break down those reports to something that the three of us can, or the code enforcement officer, or the select board can easily to say we have a problem here, or we, we have any issues to go after. Uh, and also, uh, perhaps it would include, and these, these would be performance items that, or scope of work that would be developed by the CEO as to periodic on-site inspections of the, of the work, so that there's also another set of eyes on the, the stormwater and sediment systems, et cetera.
So you want to condense that into a motion?
Let's see. Uh, I will make a motion that the town appoint a third-party inspector as allowed by the Unified Development Review Ordinance, uh, section six dot A and ten dot B dot two, oh, I'm sorry, twelve, to carry out the role of the inspecting official as defined in the U D R O for these, the, the Merrill Hill lift two project, which is twenty-three dash two seven five, and the Barker Express Lift Replacement Project Number, or Application Number twenty-three dash two seven six. How's that?
I, I would approve, I, I would second that, except, uh, replace the word appoint with the word, um, engage.
Engage, yes. I've been watching much start better.
I'll, I'll second what Ted had to say. Um, um, it's been moved and seconded that we approve that long-winded thing that Ted just had to say. I'm sorry, but I can't remember all that, I'm not about to try it. All those in favor?
One, two, three.
You did a darn good job of it.
Yeah.
It's just, you have two thirty here. Uh, anything else, gentlemen, ladies?
I, I will move that we adjourn.
Nope, can we just finish up schedule, next meeting, April fifth, be prepared to vote for officers, and I will not be here.
Come on, we're gonna make you chairman.
No. I'm not a taxpayer.
What happens when you're not here to?
I'm not a taxpayer.
Speaking of such, uh, Bruce, you are up, your appointment is up to this summer.
Oh, good.
So, uh.
So we get the new guy?
I don't know, he.
I don't know. That's the wrong answer.
You, Bruce, prior to the second select board meeting in June, if you would let the town administrator know if you will continue on the planning board or if you are going to.
No, no, he will continue on.
I've already learned how to forge a signature, it's done.
He's Zorro signs.
She's a lefty just like you.
I can fake it real good, though.
Anyway, that, the, the second select board meeting in June is what, that select board will either renew your commitment or send you a goodbye present.
Do I get a gold watch? So the next meeting is the fifth of April.
So, just out of curiosity, and we're, we're in open discussion, I would assume, do we, are we, are we having thoughts of expanding the planning board?
No, we just reduced it.
I know.
But you do have, don't you have one more alternate?
We need to have one more alter, we have an alternate.
We do have one more. We have an empty alternate seat, yes.
And I.
Three members and two alternates.
I do not remember the exact wording of the ordinance that amended the planning board, whether or not it said only three members or three or more members.
Because we just have five.
It wasn't me, but it's, um, it's not in, it's, is it in the planning board ordinance or the planning board bylaws? I thought it was the bylaws.
I think it's in the planning board ordinance, because that was passed, just, uh, two years ago, in order to reduce the size of the planning board to three members.
Because you couldn't get anybody to show up.
Right, exactly, exactly, yeah.
And out of coincidence, last night, there was a public meeting over in Woodstock to reduce the size of their planning board down to three.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, reducing it down to three made it so that we could.
Corum's two.
Reduce it to a Corum two.
Right, right.
But they would have to obviously, um, vote a light or else motion, whatever motion would die.
It also, it also means that us three can never go to a cocktail party together and talk to each other.
No, we're trying.
I don't drink, so.
Okay, I thought planning board did this.
So, uh, any other?
No, no.
Open discussions?
I'm good.
With, having discussed it, the next meeting is April fifth, and then we will have elections of officer, and that the code enforcement officer will not be present. I move that we adjourn this meeting of the new refining board and reconvene on, uh, at six P M on April fifth.
Eighteen hundred?
Eighty, it's eighteen hundred.
Yeah, just, I'll second that.
I'll second that, all right, you already gave second and thirds, all those in favor? One, two, three, we're gone. Are we too taxing for you?
Have to study this for a while.
We're trying to, just to keep everybody out of.
What am I getting, anything?